No candidate or campaign staffer has seen the questions. Candidates may stand or remain seated to give opening and closing statements. Candidates were, as I said before, given the time limits and order of the program in advance. Candidates drew numbers and will introduce themselves in that order. Each candidate will have 2 minutes to introduce themselves. This will be followed by questioning. Then each candidate will have 1 to 2 minutes to answer the question based on the moderator's instructions. We're not looking for bumper sticker sound bites. The questions are designed to bring out the candidate's core principles, values, skill sets, and the intent for the office for which they're seeking. There will be no additional time given for rebuttals until the end. So candidates, if you get into a situation where someone says something you don't like, don't ask me if you can answer that. Wait till the end. You'll have 2 minutes to rebut, to bring up a new topic, or to finish a point on a previous question. Time limits will be enforced. If you're mid-sentence and need to complete a sentence, you may do so, but don't try to start a new paragraph or a chapter. It doesn't work here. And so I want to introduce our board, Mr. Rick Eisenbach, Mr. Tom Fabry, who is our timekeeper, Mr. Craig McCarty, who helps us with the question matrix to make sure that we have the questions mixed up in the order, and then Ms. Toni Fabry. So I'm gonna go take my seat, and we will get started. Welcome, John Moore. Can you hear me, John Moore?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Okay, John Moore, guess what? You got the number 2 spot, which means you will always be in the middle for opening comments and for close. So, all right. So, Mr. Khalifa, you open, and then Mr. Moore, you will follow him with your open, and then Mr. Mike Adams.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Grassroots America, we, the people of Board for Act for Board for having us here today. I really appreciate this opportunity. I am on Raw Khalifa, and I am running for Smith County Commissioner, Precinct 2. I'm married to my wife, Hala, for 35 years, and we have 3 successful daughters. With me tonight is Robert Patterson, my campaign treasurer. He's sitting in the back. Hey, Robert, thank you for being here. I'm a lifelong Republican because small government and low taxes are a must. I'm an immigrant. We came here in 1969 because of my mom. She was, got the National Award in Science in Egypt and was recruited all over the world to do research. So we came to Dallas for her to do her research when I was 8 years old. Then we moved to Henderson, East Texas, in the mid-'70s, when my dad got a job as a pathologist. And then we followed him to Henderson, and Henderson was home for me for a long, long time. Perhaps that's why I talk the way I do. I've been working since I was 12 years old. I was in sales, selling subscriptions to the Dallas Morning News. I did that for 4 years. So when I start something, I kind of stick to it, and you know, if I'm good at it, it really helps. I attended Kilgore College, and I got my engineering degree from Texas A&amp;M University. I got my master's degree in business from University of South Carolina. Came to Tyler to work for Hal Baker Engineers, which is a chemical engineering company in sales in 1989, and I've lived in Precinct 2 ever since then, in the precinct that I'm running for, where I was doing refinery and production facility sales. I started my woodworking company, Pyramid Homes, in 1993 as a home builder and land developer. We design and build comfortable, healthy, energy-efficient homes all over East Texas. I have developed several neighborhoods in Smith County, giving me a better understanding of building roads and bridges, the county's biggest budget.
Time.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you again for accommodating my situation. Obviously couldn't be helped, and I'm very appreciative. My name is John Moore, and I have lived in Precinct 2 for 35 years. I lived in, with my wife, Terry, and I've lived on our 10-acre homestead, south of White House, since 2003. Some of you may know me from my syndicated newspaper column called "Moore Thoughts," and if you've read it, you see that quite often I write about the simpler times that our country's had, what I call the Mayberry Period of our country. And often, in that show, Andy Griffith, you see simple approaches to sometimes complex problems. And I've found through the years that those often work more often than not. And that's the kind of approach I've taken to our business, which my wife and I started in 1998. We have a successful business. It is a marketing and audio production company. It's grown to serve companies like Kellogg's, Freedom Lay, even Marcus, as well as did a project for Oprah Winfrey. During that time that I've owned the business, I've also had the opportunity to work for both major health systems, both Trinity Mother Francis and UT Health. Learned a lot about healthcare during that time, a whole, whole lot. And also had the opportunity to work for Sheriff Larry Smith at the sheriff's office, and Matt Schaefer at the Capitol in Austin, as senior policy advisor. Proud to have both of their endorsements, and I look forward to taking what I have learned through all of my experience and putting that to work to help the taxpayers get their money's worth, and also to be prudent about the spending. I am pro-life. I am pro-Second Amendment. I'm pro-liberty. I'm pro-law enforcement, and I'm pro-election integrity. And I look forward to serving the people of Precinct 2, and I ask for your consideration and vote.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, y'all. Good evening. Am I working now? Let me try this. Good evening. Whoa, there we go. Thank y'all for having us. I'm very glad to be here. My name is Mike Adams. I'm running for county commissioner in Precinct 2. I am a retired paramedic from Christi Trinity Mother Francis. Spent the last 20 years working on the truck, and then 4 years out of that 20, I went to administration where I saw over multimillion-dollar budgets and took care of almost 300 people. So during that time, we got to the part, retired. My wife Pam's a retired schoolteacher, White House Independent School District. We've lived in the White House area for 35 years. Live down off the old Tyler Road right now. I'm still a small business owner. I own a little company called MPA Fileworks. We sell consumer fileworks, and we do the big filework shows, y'all see, all over here. So that's one of the things that we do. It's just a part-time for us. I'm on the board of directors of 2 501(c)(3)'s, Temple Island Baptist Camp and Centerpoint Ministries. I was on the White House City Council for 6 years. I was responsible building the new city hall and all that we have down there. Also belong Pleasant Hill Baptist Church, where I've been there for 35 years. I'm a lay speaker. Also am the point man on our security and safety team. Do carry gun. Just tell y'all that right up there. I have a license to carry gun. I believe in carrying guns. So anyway, that's my thing. I've got more to tell y'all. One thing I want you to know is I'm not a politician. I am a public servant. That's what I've done for 35 years, and that's what I'll continue to do if you elect me as Commissioner, Precinct 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the first question will be in this order. Mr. Adams, you will answer my question first. Mr. Khalifa, you will go second, and Mr. Moore, you will end up that, the answers to this first question. Okay, gentlemen, one of the biggest parts of your job as a county commissioner will be to review budgets from every single elected official, independently elected official in the county, from the sheriff to the district judges, the county courts at law, et cetera, et cetera. Not only that, but the departments that are under your jurisdiction, your direct authority as a county commissioner, and those, some of those would be road and bridge, the IT department, et cetera. So we're gonna get 2 minutes to answer this. So I want you all to walk us through your first steps to ascertain whether or not the budget request is reasonable, if it's necessary, and if it will solve the problem that the budget request is designed to solve.
Thank you. Well, first of all, having never seen the budget personally and upfront, I would have to look at it and then compare it to where it's been the year before, the year before. What was the increase of those budgets as they came up for the last 5 years? I'm a 5-year guy. I like to see a 5-year plan on everything. So I'd look at that and see where that is. Then if you have an increase in those budgets as you bring them to us, why do you need that to be increased? I heard a while ago when they asked a constable something about that, and the constable came up and someone said that fuel right now is out of control, and it's gonna continue to be out of control under the current administration that we have. So for me to sit here and look at that, if that was one thing that came up, I would probably say, yeah, that would be a big one coming up. The other one is just general expenses in general. From a person who deals out today with a lot of buying stuff and buying things from foreign countries, and everything we have comes from foreign countries today, I see prices going up and up and up. So as we look at all these departments, we need to look at that. Do they need more employees? If they have to have more employees, why do they have to have more employees? Did their workload change? What changed? Having worked at the hospital and worked with million-dollar budgets, there's always a reason for something. There's a cause and effect for anything to go up. If something's gonna go up, what caused it to go up? And then you have to look at it. It's your responsibility as the commissioner. You're 1 of 4, the vote of 1 of 4, and when it comes up, you have to do your due diligence and make sure that you know what's coming up. Not that you picked that up that day when it came up and you looked at it and you say, well, I already know what it is, but I'll vote yes. I'm 100% against that. I think you have to do due diligence. You have to know that. You have to know your department heads, especially under your control and under your thing. And I would promise you as that, I would leave that up to them, and they'd bring it to me, and I would do the best I can to protect your taxpayer dollars.
I started my company with money in my back pocket, and I've never borrowed a penny. And I plan to look at all the budgets of Smith County and grow in my company. I had to do a lot of creative things to get to where I'm at today. I would carefully look at all the budgets in the county and see if there is waste. Where is the need in the county? And try to reconcile those where we are cutting out our waste and funding what really needs to be funded in the county. And again, my, from my business, my business experience for the last 28 years in successful company that's very profitable, I believe I could do the same for the county. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have looked at the budget, and pardon me, the revenues are up about 8%, I believe, to over $104 million. The tax rate has stayed the same, and if you look at the current budget, you can see what the, what the budget numbers are going back quite a few years. But that's always helpful. I actually held a, been CEO of an organization and been over all similar departments, vehicles, purchasing, things like that. So experience comes into play when, an understanding of what they do need. And then a lot of it comes into trust. If the right person has been hired to run a department, then there's a trust factor there, but you know, as Ronald Reagan famously said, trust but verify. So you have to do your homework. You have to trust that they've done their homework. Mike referred to the price of gasoline. That came up in a situation that I had when we had a fleet of 55 vehicles, and the first thing I did when I got there was start buying Toyota Prius. Because even when gasoline gets very expensive, you can somewhat manage that. That organization today still buys Toyota Prius, I'm told. So be insensible about what you buy, thinking ahead, whether you're buying vehicles or whatever it is the department needs. You just have to do your homework. You have to have experience with it, and you have to have managed large budgets. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next round of questions will come from Mrs. Fabry, and we'll go in this order. Mr. Khalifa, number 1. Mr. Moore, you're number 2. And Mr. Adams, you're last.
Okay, thank you for being here, gentlemen. The court, as it is today, they currently assign each of the various county functions to one of the commissioners for oversight. If elected, would you vote to continue this arrangement? And if so, what would you prefer to be assigned to and why?
I don't wanna, I'm not going to the court to change things or to disrupt what it's doing, because I think they're doing a good job, and I think we have some very good commissioners now. I'm going to the court to serve. And my background is development, so roads and bridges would be my cup of tea. I put 'em in. I built 'em. I know a lot about 'em. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore?
I think this is one of the smartest things the Commissioners Court has done, is to connect the departments with commissioners. The thing I like about the structure is that even though you're assigned a certain number of departments, anybody can call anyone at any time. So you're not just limited to those particular departments. You can have conversations either way. They can call you, you can call them. Do I have a preference? Yeah, I'm a car guy and big on vehicles, but I'm certainly not going to say, I only want this or I only want that, because if you go in and you're not willing to learn something new, which I'm always willing to learn something new, it's not very productive for anybody. So I would be happy to help in any way.
Thank you.
I am in favor of keeping it like it's been. I've been going to court now for probably 3 or 4 years. I did that with my job at Christus. I've watched it. I've seen it work. I know it works. But here's one thing that I want you to understand, too. With this new, after we come through this election cycle and we get to it, the court that you know it now is no longer there. The only person who will be left there will be Terry Phillips, the commissioner in Precinct 3. You will have all new seats sitting in there. So it's gonna be real important that we look to the past and don't just throw the past away. If the past has worked, let's stay with the past and make it work now.
So this next question, the order will go Mr. Moore, second, Mr. Adams, and third, Mr. Khalifa. All 3 of you are running on the Republican ticket, and all of you have strong Republican voting records. We've checked. One of the priorities of the Republican Party of Texas is the elimination of property tax, so that people actually own their homes and their lands instead of renting them from you every year. Given that that's a priority of the Republican Party, does your philosophy of funding the government, the county government, align with the Republican Party? If so, what are your thoughts about how to properly fund the legitimate functions of county government? And if your philosophy of funding the government does not align with the Republican Party, why not?
So I'm first, correct?
Yes.
Yes, I would love to get rid of property taxes. I think they're, they're taxing, pardon the pun. I believe, I believe 61% of the budget for the county comes from ad valorem, property taxes. I'm open to all kinds of ideas, and there's some pretty good ones floating around out there. I don't pretend to be an expert on it. I know there's consumption taxes and other ideas. I do think it would be fair for everybody to pay. This is not a new idea. You know, we've talked about flat taxes as far back as I can remember in regard to income taxes. I would love to see property taxes go away. Yes.
As a person who is 67 years old and retired, I do not own my house. The county owns my house. And there's a, you say, well, how is that, Mike? I have to pay taxes. My house is paid for. It's clear. My taxes, I pay $1,000 a month in taxes and insurance. So when we come and look at that, yeah, I'm that way. I think we ought to go to a flat tax that's out there, something that's collectible through the state. It could be, y'all know what 2 cents would change everything in the world when it would come down to that. Just 2 cents. That way, everybody, whether you're here legally, illegally, whatever, when you go to Walmart, wherever you go, you pay your share of it. And that way, the burden is not pushed on us so much.
I'm a landowner, land developer. Real estate is my game, and I have a lot of property, and I pay a lot of property tax. I would be the first in line to get rid of property taxes. It's not an equitable way for taxing and funding the government. We'd like, I'd like to see what other options we have and what is more equitable and where more people contribute to the funding of the services that they get.
Okay, the next question will be asked by Mr. Eisenbach, and you answer in this order. Mr. Khalifa, Mr. Moore, and then Mr. Adams.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I'm guessing that this big salary as county commissioner is not your burning reason, your primary reason for running. So what would be your innermost burning desire, the reason that you're seeking this office? What is it that pulls you to this, to seek this position?
Thank you. I did not seek running for office as county commissioner. A good friend of mine, we went to lunch, and he asked me to run. And at first, I dismissed it. And he knows, no, you really gotta run because of my education, because of giving back to the community, my record, my, my business that I've run. He really, you really need to run, and you need to give back to the community. So I asked a lot of the elected officials that I know, and I know quite a few, and my friends and advisors, my wife and others, and they, I was really surprised at the encouragement that I got to run, and that's what prompted me to run. I just wanna serve and give back, because I've given, given so much for this county, and I just wanna give back. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Okay, one of the criteria that I have for voting for someone is whether they felt called or whether they had another reason for running. I was called, I feel called to do this, just like you're called to serve in church in different ways. I feel called to serve as county commissioner. And this goes back, my grandfather was a city councilman in a little small town I grew up in, and he told me more than once, "Son, you cannot just take from where you live. You have to give back." And if you feel called, whether that's in church or in your town, you have to answer the call." And that's exactly what I'm doing. I'm called.
Under the current administration, I am very, very frustrated. I was sitting one day and I was listening, and I can't tell you who it was that was talking. He says, "If you have the ability today to be on the school board, the city council, county commissioner, county judge, you need to do that, rather than sitting around griping about everything that goes on. Get up, get positive, and make something happen." I thought, I've got the ability to do that. God's given me that ability to do that. I have the experience, I have the past, and I have the other things. And that's why I am so passionate about coming in here and wanting to be Commissioner, Precinct 2.
All right, Mr. Fabry is next, and we'll go in this order. Mr. Moore, you go first, and Mr. Adams, second, and Mr. Khalifa, you round out this round of questions.
So as much as we all, you all and we all would like to get rid of property taxes, they are still here. And as a commissioner, you will in fact set the rate, which will determine how much the people in this room and the rest of the citizens of this county will pay. So as commissioners, you have the options of setting a tax within a range. You can do the, what's called the no-new taxes range, which is basically a rate that would keep what people pay the same as it was last year. You can, you can go to, up to a limit that the legislature has set, which is called the approved tax rate, or you can do something in between or below. What are the principles that would guide you in determining how you will push the budgets, which will then drive the tax rate, how you, how you will set that rate within those parameters?
I believe I'm first. I'm hearing a lot of talking, and I think I heard most of the questions, so if I don't answer it exactly like you ask it, please correct me. The tax rate this time is the same as it was last time, .335, but if you go back a few years, it was lower. So here's the issue that I have right now. We have a lot of people moving into this area that's driven home prices up, it's driven construction up. So you may have a .335 again this year, but if you're looking at increased appraisals, which we all are every single time, that's more money. My big concern right now is that we are going to tax families, people who live here, and to be able to even afford to live at the same level that they've been living. So I think there are some variables there. My goal is to turn taxes the other way and find revenue sources regardless, regardless of what the economy's doing. But I'm really worried about families in that regard. The Fed has announced they are gonna increase interest rates, so it's gonna cost more money to borrow money. I also am not a fan of debt. My wife and I do not have any debt, and haven't for a very long time, but not everybody else is fortunate like that. So I think it needs to be all things considered, really. But my goal regardless is to go the other way with the tax rate.
I think I'm next, right?
Yes.
When you look at the term that they said this year, there's no new tax increase, that's not entirely true. Like Mr. Moore just said, if you look at the price of your property, when you got your taxes this year and you got your things from the Smith County Appraisal District, your taxes went up. Mine did, and I'm sitting on fixed income. I'm sitting here. And I would like to tell you today that there's a lot of people that they can't afford that. You know, I think I looked up the other day, and the average house, medium household went up 18% in Smith County last year. I can give you an example of that. I too built a few little houses along. I had a house that I sold the other day, and it, it sold for $79,000 more than the one did 8 months prior to that. 79,000. That is nothing more than an inflated value that goes up. We've got to stop that. We have to find some way to top this up that where the property tax will not put us all in poorhouse.
Thank you. And I just want to tell you, John Moore, that it is not the noise in this room. The hotel overbooked the facility tonight, so we're having to share with a group. That is a little bit louder than we appreciate, so.
Yeah, well, thanks for letting me know.
All right, okay, go ahead. I just wanted to, just a minute to just let him know, we weren't trying to minimize his answers.
So on taxes and how do we keep them low? Again, looking at all the budgets that we have and seeing what are the real needs of the county. Do we really need to be spending the money that we're spending, and where can we cut? And, and that's how we really need to approach all of it in a business kind of sense of what is needed, how much is needed, and make sure that we provide the services that, that Republican values of services, of infrastructure, of, of security, and not to be doing more than what we should be doing as a government.
The next question, Mr. Adams, you'll go first, Mr. Khalifa, second, and Mr. Moore, you will go third. Let's explore a little bit your ideas about how to save money, okay? It's our experience that every time government talks about a budget, they talk about one side of the equation, and that is how much additional revenue they're going to get. They always start out with revenue, okay? And so that means our pocketbooks are involved. We're interested in finding out the side of the equation that helps reduce the operating cost. So if you would, think very quickly about some of the departments that would answer directly to the Commissioners Court. For example, road and bridge, facilities management, purchasing, some of those, you know, IT, those sorts of departments. And so think about how you would measure performance in those departments, and also how you would go about matching money and mission. So if you would just talk to us a little bit about that, then we'll get some insights into your abilities to help us with the cost of things.
Just go back to the other question we had a while ago about looking at the budgets and making sure the budgets you see are presented to you and is the best for what that department needs. A couple of things that we have in the county, one thing I was sitting in the Commissioners Court meeting one day, and it just didn't make any sense to me. They were talking about, well, we're gonna get the elevators fixed on the Cotton Belt business building, and they knew that we had $200,000 to get them fixed, and the bid came in at $200,000. I thought, that's kinda stupid. Why tell them? Why tell them how much money you've got to spend?" You know, when it comes in here, we shouldn't be looking at what we've got to spend, we should be looking back this way. I go to my church life. My church life, we came in $65,000 under a million dollar budget this year. It's very good to do that. Things that are out of control, that have got to be brought under budget, Smith County Jail, no doubt about it. You look at that, we're, we have overpopulating, we can't get people to work, our expenses are high. So we have to get on these things, and we have to get there and start doing them now, not just waiting because we have more money that coming in from property taxes and all that. We have got to cut the tax and take a proactive look at it.
If I'm elected, I'm going to start after I get elected, not when I take office, to take a deep dive into the budget, looking at every department and taking the time so that on day one, when I am sworn in to office, that I can do a great job at knowing what needs to be done, what needs to be cut, and where, where we need to go to make sure that we're minimizing the cost of doing businesses in the county.
Mr. Moore?
Can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I have been looking at the budget, and I have been looking at each department and expenditures over a period of, of years. And you've got some areas that obviously are going to go up just because of what's happening in the economy. I know there is a plan underway to, they're going to be adding on to Roden Bridge and doing some remodeling there. That's going to cost probably more than they expected it to cost. But the commissioner's court has a 10-point plan, and under number eight, it's task forces. And I think this is one of the best ideas that we could possibly implement because it does two things. It gets the community involved in county government and helps them understand the problems, and it taps into the brain trust that we have in our communities to help us figure out problems. One of the areas I think that we need to look at is automobiles and, and Roden Bridge.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next round of questions, Mr. Khalifa, you go first, Mr. Moore, you will go second, and Mr. Adams, you'll finish it up. Mrs. Fabry.
The commissioners deal with a large number of governmental functions, but three of their key responsibilities relate to elections, Roden Bridge, and sheriff. What in your background has prepared you to be an informed commissioner in these areas?
I go first, right? So the, the three Adams again, please.
Elections, Roden Bridge, and the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you very much. So election integrity, of course, is extremely important, and we need to make sure that our election administrator has all her tools that she needs to make sure she, she runs proper elections that we know are fair and just with no meddling. As far as roads and bridges, again, my, my experience in, in, in development in the county, you know, gives me a leg up on my competitors, but, you know, that's, that's where I have a lot of experience. And the last was the, I'm sorry.
Sheriff.
Sheriff's Department. I've got a great relationship with Larry, and we, I would work with him closely to make sure that the budgets are as tight as they can be for his departments. There's other things that are out of their control or in their control, I guess, but there's a big shortage of staff in the jail, and there's a lot of problems with staffing. We'll see what we can do to help advise the sheriff and what he can get done.
All right. Okay, Mr. Moore?
So in the last week, 13 police officers have been shot in the United States. Today, three were shot in the city of Houston. Cops are under attack, which means we are under attack. I worked for Larry Smith, I've worked in the sheriff's office, I've been in there day to day, and I know what goes on. I bring experience in that area. Roden Bridge, I dealt with them frequently because I drove a county car and had a chance to talk to them quite often. I'm also a car guy. As far as elections, I took the initiative to go and meet with Michelle Alcon a few weeks ago, and I questioned her. You know, my background is journalism, I'm a reporter, I'm a writer. So I asked her some hard questions about the election process, and I'm still not sold that once our, our information hits the internet, that it's where it can't be messed with. My social security number was stolen from the federal government. So I still have questions and I want to know more.
When it comes to elections, it has to be fair and equitable to all. As the news reports recently, when they're sending out the mail-in ballots, it's coming out that they don't understand which four numbers they ever used to put in there. People say, "How do you get that confused?" I know that. They ask me what my password is, and I don't know what my password is half the time. So there you have that. When it comes to Roden Bridge, I'll kind of differ from Mr. Khalifa. I was six years down in White House when we built some terrific infrastructure, and I was responsible for roads and gutters and curbs and bridges. When it comes to the sheriff, I'm 35 years first responder. I have worked hand in hand in the field with these guys. I know what they need. They saved my life, I've saved their life. And so I think I have a lot of experience that I can bring to there, and I'd, I guess that's about it.
All right, gentlemen, the order of the questions this time will be Mr. Moore first, Mr. Adams second, Mr. Khalifa third. The county courthouse has long been an issue in Smith County. Traction was made on considering a new structure a few years ago. The current judge in court, quite wisely, I believe, tabled that issue during the scandemic, plandemic that we've been going through. Now that we're kind of in a new normal, do you believe that it's time to revisit that? And do you think we should rebuild, I'm sorry, should we build a new courthouse? Or do you think we should renovate the existing one? Or do nothing?
So I'm first, correct?
Correct.
Thanks. I, I've already revisited this. I've called and made appointments with and visited with Judge Reed Jackson and with DA Jacob Putman, and I toured the courthouse again. It'd been a while since I'd been in it, since jury duty, so I went and looked. And then I also looked at the budget to see how much the commissioner's court spent last year on windows and things like that. It was a lot of money. I asked the judge and the district attorney, you know, what it was like working in the existing courthouse, what were their concerns? The big one was safety. So I've revisited that. I think what needs to happen is the voters need to have an update on what it's costing to try to maintain the current courthouse, and then an accurate number of what it would cost to replace it, and then let them decide. But I do think it needs to be up to them.
The current courthouse that we have today is not very usable. If you go down there and you have to go in and have a personal experience, I was in the restroom and a guy came in and he said something to me, and if I would spoke back to him, that could have hit a mistrial and something that went on with everybody using the same restroom, coming and going. I know we've got to do something. I don't want to build no Taj Mahal, I can tell you all that right now, but we've got to have something that we can use for safety and for the rest of all these people that are here. One thing that kind of struck me the other day, I did see something on the, the American Rescue Act where the county got $45 million that came in there, and something said, "Well, maybe part of that could be used for the courthouse." I thought, "Whoa." I'm, not that, not that I'm 100% in favor of spending any of that American Rescue money because of the fact that we don't know what our strings are tied onto it right now." So that's my answer.
So when, when the courthouse issue came up, I was against a new courthouse because I didn't want to spend any more money. It's working, what we have now is working, I don't hear a whole lot of complaints. Why, why do we really need a courthouse? Until I went to the courthouse, and it's a mess. And the people coming and going like, like my friend Mike said about the, the dangers, and you're sitting waiting to be a witness, and inmates are walking by shackled, and attorneys and judges, and it's just a hodgepodge. But again, it really needs to be done fiscally, responsibly. And as a builder, I've looked at remodeling stuff and building, and there's no way to remodel that courthouse and make it functional. So I really do believe we do need a new courthouse, but it needs to be done properly. And like Mike said, it doesn't need to be a Taj Mahal.
Okay, Mr. Eisenbach will have the next question, and we'll go in this order. Mr. Khalifa, number one, Mr. Moore, number two, and Mr. Adams, you will go last.
Thank you. I'm sure each of you has thoroughly looked at the county agenda, priorities, current or past. So aside, but aside from Roden Bridge, because that is a key function of the county court, what are a couple of your top priorities that you would focus on coming into the court? Other than, aside from Roden Bridge? Aside from Roden Bridge and a new courthouse? You just mentioned, so that'd be one of those.
Okay, thank you. There's a couple. The, the animal control has no licensed peace officers. So if they go into a situation where they need a licensed peace officer, they either got to wait on a constable or a sheriff to show up. The commissioner's court just approved for two of their people to become licensed peace officers, so it would kind of reduce the number of calls for the other departments. And I think that, that this should be, we need to look at that and see how it's working, and do we really need all of them to be licensed, or are we good with just a couple of them? Mental health is another big issue in our county, and not just in our jails, but also outside of our jails. I was on the board for the Samaritan Counseling Center, mental health nonprofit, and I, and I would be looking more and more into seeing what we can do to reduce costs by helping the mental health folks before they become a big cost to the county.
Mr. Moore?
Would you mind repeating the question? You broke up when I was listening, I'm sorry.
No problem. I know each of you has studied, carefully studied the agenda for county, Smith County Court. And I have a, aside from Roden Bridge, give us a couple of your top priorities that you would focus on as commissioner. Not, not, I, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I apologize for stepping on top of you there. Number one for me is law enforcement, the sheriff's office and the jail. I mean, there are myriad reasons why the population of the jail has gone so high. You know, COVID and courts slowing down and different, different reasons, taking in inmates and so forth. But that pressure has caused, even with a significant pay increase for jailers and, and others, it's hard to keep anybody, it's hard to get them to stay. We have to, we have to solve that problem. We really, that needs to be first, I think. And then the other, on my mention, and that is mental health. We have a golden opportunity here to partner with this new medical school that UT is bringing in. They are going to have people that are available. I think there's a way to save a lot of money and to get people the help they need. I have a cousin with schizophrenia, and we've lived with it for years, and I'm telling you, the problem is real.
I'm going to kind of echo that, and I think I brought it up first, and that is the jail. I've been attending the meetings down there now for several years, and I see more discourse and more uncertainty about the jail than I have anything. We have 33 people short in the jail, and you can't get people to come work. Now we've even got to the part where when they have to work overtime, they don't get any pay for that, they get hours for working overtime. That is not conducive to somebody who wants to do that. I know, I have been on 12-hour shifts all my life, I've worked 20-hour shifts. That's something that we've got to figure out and get out. You know, we're 700 cases waiting to go on felony trial right now. That's just a backlog that's just going to be tremendous for us to ever get out of, if we can ever get out of that. I too believe in, in something that we have to have is something better for mental health. Mental health is not just taxing us as individuals, it tags our hospital and all our healthcare facilities too, and that's part of it we need to be looking at.
Okay, Mr. Fabry will have the next question, and we'll go in this order. Mr. Adams, then Mr. Khalifa, and John, you will answer last on this one.
Gentlemen, as I mentioned earlier, this is a different court. New judge, a bunch of whole new commissioners. So how, tell, tell this group how you would manage the operation of the court, how your personality, how you would interact with the other commissioners to drive liberty principles, fiscal responsibility, and, and the proper growth of this burgeoning community?
Well, the first thing we got to find out is that we're all on common ground. And I'm one of those guys, I never meet a stranger, I just come up to anybody and start talking. You know, maybe it's a good thing, maybe that's a bad thing. But I, I do know this, I do know Neil Franklin, he and I have worked together hands in hands many times. I think he'll do fine as county judge, we'll see how that works out. I know Mr. Phillips, I've known him from being down there. I know Mr. Haggler barely, I know Pam Frederick real well from City of Buller, from working with them for years and years. So, you know, whoever's in there, we've got to come together as a group, and we've got to be together as a group. One thing that I had in this, and when we were down at White House, and I learned this from the judge's dad, and he always said this, because we would argue sometimes, and we'd go to closed session, and we'd argue and argue, and we'd get out of there, but when we got through, it was always this, "We were still friends, and we still love one another, and we work together."
My track record speaks for itself, I'm a, I'm a bridge builder. I work with people that are not likely for me to work with to do good in our community. And I, I, I've been in sales since, like I said, I was a kid. I'm a, I'm a person who can get people together and work together and be able to sell my ideas to them in a way they could understand and appreciate what needs to be done for the betterment of the county.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. This was touched on, but I, I think it's, number one, the current court has done a really good job. I, I commend all of them. I think the fact that most of us know everyone else who could potentially wind up on the court, and we know each other's strengths and weaknesses, is a big plus. My background, as I mentioned, is communications, and I mentioned that my wife and I have owned a business for almost 24 years. Part of building a business is relationships and communications. So if everybody on board here who winds up on the court has those as strengths, and I believe they do, and Commissioner Phillips obviously does, and he's done a great job, I just see a positive situation from the start.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, for the next question, Mr. Moore, you will go first, Mr. Adams, second, and Mr. Khalifa will go last on this one. Let's talk about federal funds a few minutes. The current discussion is about the strings that are, that come along with federal funds as it pertains to public education. You see parents outraged over the type of books that are being discovered in classrooms and in libraries. And then we have some cultural Marxist ideas that have, that are being taught through social emotional learning. Most of those ideas come through federal strings because you're to conform to certain, you know, to certain guidelines that have to do with these federal funds. So we're discovering as we look at some of the grants, the new grants that are coming out, that there are, there are some guidelines that don't fit with the values of this community as it applies to law enforcement, as it applies to private property. So I would like for you all to answer what your protocols will be when a, an elected official or a department head shows up with a federal grant to get some free money. Mr. Moore is first, Mr. Adams, second, and Mr. Khalifa, your last.
Thank you. As my grandfather used to say, ain't nothing free. There's always strings attached. I've worked for the state, and I can tell you that there is a lot of work involved getting this quote-unquote "free" money, and there are always strings attached. And even if you have the best legal counsel in the world, and they go over it with a fine-tooth comb, there's always something else hiding behind it. I'm not a fan. I am a fan of taking care of our own business as best we can. There are some situations where money is truly no strings attached, but it's pretty rare. So I would always go into it So, I would always go into it with a very cautious eye.
When it comes to free money, that's a very, very slippery slope. I mentioned that a while ago, the American Rescue Plan, ARP, I think is what they call that. One of the things that came up at the county Commissioners' Meeting a couple, two or three weeks ago was the fact that now we've had to go hire a consultant firm to come in there to show us how to spend that money so that we do it legally with the government. And so, that was one of the things that came up, you know? There is no free money, Paul. And when it comes to school, I don't want them coming in here telling me what we can or can't teach. I lived with an educator for 35 years. I have to listen to that every night, day in and day out. And so, I can promise you that when it comes to that, none of the educators here want anybody from Washington DC telling them how to read and write and teach our kids what the proper thing is in learning school.
It is a real slippery slope, and it is money that, potentially, that can benefit the citizens of Smith County. So, each one of these has to really be studied and see what is behind it and what benefits are truly there, and then decide which grants do we want to go after and which grants we don't want to go after.
There is one more question before we get to the rebuttal, the 10-minute thing, and then the close. And this is what I call the billboard question. So, in recent years, we've had a number of elected officials in Smith County who have found themselves on the wrong side of the law, and they've been an embarrassment to our community. So, I'm going to ask you a question that we ask all candidates. And I'll give you a recent example of this. During candidate interviews, the last primary cycle, the last elected occupant of office of Smith County Constable Precinct 2 looked this board in the eye and lied. And he was pretty good at it, too. And it's just too bad that the public found out about his behavior after he was elected. So, is there anything about your current or past conduct that you would not want your spouse, your children, your parents, your pastor, your neighbors, your friends, or this board of directors to find out about? If the answer is yes, you may speak to this board privately about it. If the answer is no, make sure your answer is true. Because if we discover a lie after we've endorsed you, the public divorce will be very painful and very public, and I mean every word of that, gentlemen. So, here's the order. Mr. Khalifa, then Mr. Moore, and then you last, Mr. Adams.
My answer is no, absolutely not.
Mr. Moore.
I think it would help if I turned my microphone on. Sorry about that. I think anybody who says they don't have something in their past that they're ashamed of is not being honest. So, I'm sure there is. Anything of major significance, I can't think of anything, no.
My answer would be no, and I'm like John. I am a sinner saved by grace. So, I'm just telling you that right now, but there's nothing I would not have you people pull over.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are ready for the two minutes. And do me a random deal there. Great. And so, we're going to tell you what order that is. Mr. Adams, you will have the first two minutes. Mr. Khalifa, you will be second, and Mr. Moore, you will be last with your two minutes. Use it however you want to, gentlemen.
I'm going to stand up for this one, if that's all right. Number one, I have no problem with Mr. Khalifa. I have no problem with Mr. Moore. We're all personal friends. We're going to be friends when this thing's over, and we're going to carry on, and we're going to be in this community and carry on. But let me tell you where I am at. I hear people all the time say, "Well, I'm a pro Second Amendment." I've already told you I carry a gun. I don't look at any amendment being stronger than the other ones. But this is one reason why I am running. Something happened, and you said it earlier, so I'm going to bring it up. We came into this thing called COVID. And COVID is not a joke. Don't, I'm not downplaying that one bit. It was serious. It's killed lots and lots of people. But listen to me, guys. Y'all let our First Amendment, just like I do, get pulled right out from under us when the government came in here and said, "You do not have the right to go to church if you're going to have more than 10 people in your church." I don't live in that country. I don't live in that country. Well, we can do church by Zoom. I hate Zoom. I hate it. Y'all can take that any way you want it. I hate Zoom. But, and that's when I made up my mind, you know, I'm not going to put up with this no more. And we, as the people, have got to say enough is enough. Don't scare me with what, they don't know anymore about COVID, and this is a medical guy talking to, they don't know anymore about COVID today than they did two years ago when we started. But they use it as a scare tactic to say, "Shut your business down. Shut everything down. It'll get better. It'll get better." And the day they say, "We still don't know." So, this is kind of my two-minute little speech, my little soapbox, why I had to stand up. Thank you.
I want to yield my rebuttal.
Mr. Moore.
So, I don't know what COVID is either, but I can assure each of you in that room, you don't want it. I would much rather be sitting in there with y'all having a big bottle of water instead of drinking whatever this stuff is they have me drinking here. So, I'm going to take a little bit of a different tact here. Our president is in violation and dereliction of his duties. I watched tonight more footage of him sneaking people who came into this country with, we have no idea what their health history is, what their criminal history is, and he is dumping them strategically. For what purpose? I think we all probably can guess, in different parts of the country. McAllen, Texas, up in New York State. And what has that caused? It's caused a lot of people to be raped, kidnapped, shot. The cops are under attack. And we watch this on TV, but if you don't think this can happen right here where we are, it can. And to some degree, if you watch the news or read the paper, it's already happened to some degree. And in the coming months, in coming years, the Commissioners' Court is going to play a role in how we deal with this nonsense. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to do everything I can to work with law enforcement, not just the Sheriff's Office, but to communicate with everybody and figure out the best plan to protect us, because I'm telling you, we're going to need it.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so here are your closing remarks order. Mr. Adams, you'll go first. Mr. Moore, you'll go second. And Mr. Khalifa, you will round it out.
I believe that your last stance of freedom is the county in which you live. Last stance of freedom you have will be with the sheriff that you have elected to run that county. Last stance of freedom you have will be with the Commissioners that you have that allow the federal government to come in or to stay out, no matter what they do with our money or how they do with our money. We have got to be with the fact that we know that the five people we have sitting on that county Commissioners' Board and the county judge are all in one accord, and we don't have to always agree, like I told you all ago, but we have to do what's best for the citizens and the constituents of Smith County. Because I tell you what, the threat is real, and the threat's coming. Thank you.
Am I next?
Yes.
So, I got an email, or it was a private message on Facebook, I think, with a gentleman who had lived in Austin, as Matt Shaker likes to call it, the People's Republic of Austin, for 11 years. He had moved back, and he sent me down his homework. He wanted to support me. And the only question he had was, would I answer emails and take phone calls from constituents? And I guess that's what it's like in Austin, but that's not what it's been like here. I think our Commissioners' Court has done a fine job, and the answer I gave to him is the answer I give to everybody. Yes, I will keep office hours. I will be there. You can have my cell phone number right now. You got my email now. I will be responsible and responsive to the public. I'm ready to go to work.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all and let us know who we are, and like Mike said, John, Mike and I, we're good with each other, and I think the county's going to win. No matter which one of us is in office, I prefer it would be me. And I'm here to get your support. You've heard what we all have to say. I hope that I have earned it, and I hope that I have earned your endorsement. Thank you again very much for having this forum and allowing us to speak.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much, gentlemen. You are people who have actually thought quite a bit about the service. And Mr. Moore, I have to say, for someone who has COVID, you look a lot better and you sound a lot better than I would look and sound if I had COVID. So, kudos for you. Thank you.
Well, my wife did my hair, so.
And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you.